I would like to reconvene the meeting and call the meeting to order for the City Council meeting of December 5, 2017. Madam Clerk, could you please call the roll?
Councilmember Boyson?
Here.
Councilmember Cordero?
Here.
Councilmember Moats?
Here.
Councilmember Waterfield?
Here.
Madam Mayor Patino?
Here. And before I make the presentation, Ms. Waterfield has something she would like to say and do.
I certainly do, and it is with honor that honor be given to where it is deserved. And a lot of times households are held in very high esteem and are situated in a very formal manner. And in the Hayden household, the strength behind Rick is his wife Sherri. And Sherri, I just want to thank you on behalf of the entire City Council for your strength, for helping us to have your husband as long as we did, and he just achieved great qualities. But I want to read to you the qualities that were given to me in prayer this morning. And this is something that the Lord led me to, and it is so spot on. This comes out of Proverbs, and it's Proverbs 31. And of course, that's the last chapter, and the Lord just wraps it up with a woman and her strength, and what it means to a husband, to children, to parents, and to the whole community. Who can find a virtuous and capable wife? She is more precious than rubies. Her husband can trust her, and she will greatly enrich his life. She brings him good, not harm, all the days of his life. She carefully watches everything in her household and suffers nothing from laziness. There are many virtuous and capable women in the world, but Sherri, you surpass them all, and thank you so very much. And with that, I'd like to present some flowers to you.
That's all you get for most of those flowers, Sherri. You know, I forgot to mention, I needed to ask the city attorney. Mr. Trujillo, could you please give us the closed session report?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. There is no reportable action this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. And then our next order of business is retirement resolution, and I will be making that presentation. Whereas Rick Hayden has dutifully served as the city manager for the city of Santa Maria for the past six years, and has worked for the city for more than 21 years. And whereas Rick has served six different mayors and 12 council members, and we know who your favorite mayor is, right? And multiple department heads, as a resource advisor and mentor while overseeing a city population increase of almost 60 percent during his tenure. And whereas Rick left his professional mark on Santa Maria in countless positive ways, assembling a team with a strong work ethic, building a new police headquarters, hiring executive managers to rebuild the police department, leading the successful passage of Measure U 2012 that saved essential city services, launching the city's ambitious succession planning program, championed the city's new 700 megahertz radio system and computer server farm, supporting downtown revitalization efforts with the construction of the 14-screen Cineplex, supporting the downtown Friday night farmers markets, assisting in the repairs of the Santa Maria River levee, helping facilitate the Enos Ranch development, and many more. And whereas, under Rick's leadership for the past 20 consecutive years, the city received the highest forms of recognition in governmental accounting, budgeting, and financial reporting and innovations. And whereas Rick has attended more than 500 Santa Maria City Council meetings, now therefore be it resolved by the City Council of the city of Santa Maria follows: Rick Hayden is commended for his dedicated service and contributions to the city and the Santa Maria community, is congratulated on his retirement, and the city wishes him and his family continued good health and happiness in their future endeavors. And that is a motion?
I'll second.
Madam Clerk, can you please call the roll?
Madam Mayor Patino?
Aye.
Councilmember Boyson?
Aye.
Councilmember Waterfield?
Aye.
Councilmember Moats?
Aye.
Councilmember Cordero?
Aye.
Madam Clerk, if you'd like to set the timer there. Madam Mayor, members of the City Council, I just wanted to take this opportunity to thank you for having the faith and confidence in me over the last six years as your city manager. My time here has been both challenging and rewarding. Thank you for supporting my administration and my vision for the city. As I mentioned last night, you set the policy, you set the goals, you set the mission, and you provided me with the autonomy of carrying out your mission with the department heads. And as I look around for everybody that's in the burgundy chairs tonight, you have a great set of department heads. They're innovative, they're bright, they have a strong work ethic. Jason, congratulations, you're going to do a great job, you have great department heads. I know, I hired nine out of the 10 of them. So they're fabulous individuals. And the employees that work for the department heads, the managers and supervisors, employees second to none, they're essentially the best public servants that I've had the privilege of working with. I've worked for four cities, a county and a special district, and they're fantastic public servants. I'd like to thank the community partners that we've worked with over the years, the faith-based community, the civic groups, the nonprofits. Without their collaboration and partnership, we would not have been able to do the things that we've been able to accomplish here in the city of Santa Maria. My executive assistant, Toni, I think she's back here, Diana, from my office, extraordinary work ethic. They are the glue in the office that holds us together. Jason, you're in good hands with those two young ladies. They do a phenomenal job, they've supported me for the last six years, and they're just incredible. And I'm very proud to have worked with them, as well as with all of the employees in the city of Santa Maria. They're just fantastic. My family, I want to thank them for their patience and their support over the last several years, their words of encouragement and understanding. I would not be here if not for them and the grace of God, and I appreciate that. My time here has come to an end. It's been a great ride, great privilege to have served you. Thank you.
So I'm sure there are people who would like to make comments?
Sure, let me start. You know, I've had the unique pleasure of being able to deal, to work with Rick from both sides of the plate, if you will, both from the nonprofit side as well as city council side. Rick and I have been very, very careful to make sure that those lines don't get blurred. But, you know, Rick, you took over at a pivotal juncture in our city's history. Our police department was on the brink of implosion, we were still mired in a terrible recession, and you, like the true professional that you are, you took control and steadied our ship and guided us through that. You took us from a police department in chaos to one that's admired throughout the state and the nation. You know, a lot of credit's been given to Chief Hanson and Chief Martin for that transition, and certainly they have been instrumental in that renaissance, but, Rick, it was you that put that team together, and it was you that established the basis and revamped that department and enabled that 180-degree turnaround. And I really think, Rick, that that's going to be probably your number-one legacy to the city of Santa Maria going forward. Who knows where we would have been without you. And, Rick, I was really awed by your ability to navigate the city through those tough times, and enable us to come out even stronger than we are. And so, Rick, I'm not going to be long-winded. Thank you for your leadership, thank you for your vision, most of all, thank you for your friendship. Thank you very much.
Ms. Waterfield?
I am not going to belabor everything that Jack said, but what Jack was just saying was a vision I got in my mind for your love for the game of basketball. It was showtime, Rick, and you were the coach that brought the team together. It was the Lakers of the old where, you know, it was hardcore press, and we had to make a difference, but you made that difference. You were the coach that came in and hired these people who you knew would take Santa Maria to the top, would pull them out from the bottom and take them to the top. And your leadership skills and your faith in God and your prayer and going to Him for every issue that came up catapulted you to the top, not only in this area, but all over the state of California, because they know who Rick Hayden is. And I am just so blessed and honored to be your friend, I am so blessed to be mentored by you. Your wisdom, your ability to see things that we never saw coming down the pass, it was, you know, the show team, eyes in the back of their head, they knew what was coming down the court, didn't have to turn, but handed that ball off to someone else. And Doc Onit, you did a superb job, Rick, and thank you so very, very much.
Dr. Moats?
Well, I guess going along with basketball analogies, I'm the only true freshman here on the city council. There's a lot to learn. And you were my tutor and mentor. I remember the first time we got together and sat down, you said, "I'm going to teach you municipal government 101." And you spent a lot of time with me, and I've learned a great deal, and thank you very much for it. I wish you the best in the future, I know it'll be a bright future for you.
Mr. Cordero?
Thank you. Rick, I'm one of the few in the room that's worked with you all of those 21 years in one way or another. I certainly appreciate the listening you did for me when I was still on the police department, and certainly for what you did in order to make the transition. There's only a few people in this room that know some of the real pain that was going on at that time. People think they know, and maybe some of them do, maybe some of them don't. But when you called us in, if you will remember, when I was on the council the first time, you called myself and Mayor Lavenino in together and informed us of your intended actions. There was a demeanor that you had that was different. It was no time to mess around with Rick. You were convinced in your mind, I could tell by the way you were responding, and I felt good when I left that I knew that whatever was going to take place, which was still in your hands, was the right thing for our city. And it turned out, obviously, like everybody's commented on, it was the right thing. And then when you introduced me to Chief Martin in your office, I thought, well, we are on the right road to having a fix here for our police department. So out of everything else you've done, all of those things, the thing that shines for me the most, obviously, is the transition you caused in the department.
Thank you.
Thank you. I want to say thank you. It's, golly, it's just, as soon as you became our city manager, it was one thing after another, after another, after another, and you overcame all of those obstacles, and it was just like, nothing interrupted you, and it was just very calm sailing throughout. But when you have MS-13 coming into our community, setting up shop, and the turmoil that we had going on at the police department, and everything that your decisions, we make policy, and you've got five bosses, but our decisions and your ability to implement them without any wrinkles, and I don't think there was a wrinkle or a hiccup ever, was amazing. And me as mayor, working very, very close with you all the time on a daily basis, and I said, you know, something I should have said last night at your dinner was, sometimes on a Saturday night or a Sunday when I have nothing to do, I'm sitting with my laptop and getting all my emails off my desk, so to speak, and sending them to you with comments, and then you would get right back to me, and I'd say, "Stop doing that, don't get back to me. I'm just getting this off my desk right now, you have plenty of time to answer me." But so much appreciated, Rick, so much appreciated. And what you've given to the city of Santa Maria, with your involvement in the city of Santa Maria, you have always cared about this city, just like we do. So I just say thank you from all of us.
Can we make one more request?
Sure.
That we take a picture with you, with the city council, for all of us.
Dr. Len?
And you can send it to us.
Before, as you come down, I just wanted to say, all three, the majority of you pointed on the issues that have happened right after I took office. Those were very challenging times, but my model has always been, you do what you have to do in order to do what you want to do. And we made some very tough decisions, and I didn't work isolated in a vacuum. I had the wise counsel of our city attorney, Gil Trujillo, and our then-human resources manager, Alicia Lara. We had a lot of late nights, a lot of sleepless nights, a lot of second-guessing, but we knew what we wanted to have at the end of the day, and that meant a paradigm shift for the department. And we did go out, and we did hire a few people. It's not every day you can find a Ralph Martin, a Phil Hanson, or a Don Rodriguez, and we're able to do that, and I think we're a better city for who we are today based off of those decisions. I don't take the credit, I give the credit to my coworkers. They're a great group of department heads, and you are in great hands for the years to come. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Do we have to take the picture?
There is so much to say about the good work that Rick accomplished here and him as a great colleague. I'll just simply state, thank you for your service, thank you for the efforts that you've put forward, they laid a great groundwork for us to be able to move forward. Congratulations on your retirement, and the best of luck to you and Sherri and your family and on what your next chapter brings you. Thank you.
I understand 5 o'clock tomorrow morning, you're going to start spending quality time with your kids?
All day, all the time.
Sorry, sorry, kids. The next item on our agenda will be the public comment period. Madam Clerk, would you please read the criteria for the public comment portion of this agenda?
This time is reserved to accept comments from the public on closed-session items. And, I'm sorry, I'm reading the wrong one. This time is reserved to provide comments on consent agenda items, closed-session items, and matters on the agenda this evening. Please submit a speaker slip, and you'll be provided three minutes to speak. Matters not on the printed agenda this evening will not be able to be considered. Once public comment period commences, no other speakers will be allowed to submit a request to speak for them.
Madam Clerk, do we have any speakers this evening?
Madam Mayor, we have one.
One. Thank you. No other requests to speak will be accepted at this time, and Madam Clerk, could you set the timer for three minutes? Mr. Armenta?
I'm Ernest Steven Armenta, city of Santa Maria. My honourable Madam Chair, at our last city council meeting during our report from my finance director, I asked the question, and I don't think it was an unfair, unreasonable question, I asked her if she could show me the AB 1600 fees in her report. And I knew quick that something, once Mr. Hayden started to answer, I knew that, I mean, you could tell that something was, it wasn't that it wasn't wrong, it's just the issue was this. Mr. Hayden stated that there was no AB 1600 fees collected from January 1 of 2017 to this very day. That was my understanding of what I heard Mr. Hayden say. So I look, and I come here again, and I ask you, Madam Chair, and I take no pleasure in this, but I have to ask this. How long were you aware that no growth impact fees were paid in 2017? Why didn't you bring this up to the public? I think you, I think that we're entitled, us, the ratepayers and taxpayers, need to hear from you. See, I'm not asking Mr. Boyson, or Mrs. Waterfield, or Mr. Cordero, or Councilman Moats, Dr. Moats. It's you, my honourable mayor, the people's champion, I think you should tell us, you should have told us. If it's true what Mr. Hayden said, that no AB 1600 fees were paid or collected, then you should, there's no excuse for that, Madam Chair. We had, in this year, we had the discussion about that burned playground and where we were going to find the funding. We had the discussion about Russell Park improvements, how we were going to switch the playground, this came from Alex Posada, and the funding. These are vital sources of funding. I stand here and I say, well, where's the, why was everybody so silent? These are designated funds that are for public safety, bricks and mortar funding. We didn't hear nothing from Chief Hanson all year long, if it's true that nothing was paid. We didn't hear nothing from Chief Champion, if it's true that no fees were collected or paid. It seems like all department heads who are recipients of this funding said nothing, and it seems like everybody was just quiet. Now, I may be wrong, Madam Chair, but I think this is not a good thing, especially when it comes to Measure U. So I don't know if you're going to, yellow lights blinking, I don't know if you're going to give a response.
We will get that information for you, Mr. Armenta.
But, Madam Chair, before I walk away, I don't think that this should be Mr. Stillwell's obligation or duty, or Mrs. Harvey's. It's you, Madam Chair.
Okay, I will make sure that you get that information.
From you?
Yes, from me. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Before we go on, Mr. Stillwell, do you have any comments you'd wish to make?
Just to clarify, there were AB 1600 and growth mitigation fees paid in 2017. They are a vital revenue source for us to offset the cost of development. The point Mr. Hayden made at the last meeting was the reporting, as we depicted it, didn't show a line item for AB 1600 fees, and I'll work with you, Madam Mayor, on getting the information from Mr. Armenta.
And then also the information as to where they go, different departments? Thank you. And that's what you'd like, Mr. Armenta?
Yeah.
Okay, you got it. Moving on to the consent calendar, Madam Clerk, could you please read item number three?
Routine items are presented for city council approval without discussion as a single agenda item in order to expedite the meeting. The consent calendars are approved by roll call vote with one motion. These items are discussed only on the request of council members.
Does anyone have items they wish to pull for discussion? Nothing? Okay.
Move for approval.
It's been moved in second to approve the consent calendar. Any other discussion here? Having heard none, Madam Clerk, could you please call the roll?
Councilmember Boyson?
Aye.
Councilmember Waterfield?
Aye.
Councilmember Cordero?
Aye.
Councilmember Moats?
Aye.
Madam Mayor Patino?
Aye. The next order of business is a public hearing. Madam Clerk, could you please read the title?
The city council will consider a recommendation of the planning commission to approve a zoning text amendment amending Title 12 of the city of Santa Maria municipal code to add Chapter 56 related to accessory dwelling units and updating various other related sections of the code.
The staff report is to be made by our Director of Community Development, Mr. Ing.
Good evening, Madam Mayor Patino, members of the council. This is a presentation on accessory dwelling units, or ADUs as we call them. They are defined as an accessory dwelling, essentially another house on a property with an existing single-family house. And this is a state statute that's required of all cities in California to implement. So I have some slides that will go over some details, I'm going to go over the requirements of state law, our local concerns, details of our draft ordinance, and the planning commission's recommendation. We've been looking at this for the last six or eight months or so, and we've been working on this draft that's finally before you today. We had a study session before the planning commission back in August. We reached out to our typical applicants in September to provide them some details and to get feedback from them. As you know, you had adopted a moratorium back in October until this came before you today. We had a public hearing before the planning commission on November 15, and I will provide details on that recommendation at a later slide. Again, this is a state statute. A series of Senate bills and assembly bills were passed the last couple of years that put this in place as a requirement for all cities. Essentially, the goal of the state is to increase the inventory of housing. Specifically, they want to increase the availability of affordable housing. The state has information that says that we've, as a whole, we've underbuilt in the provision of housing for the state, and this is one way that they believe cities can accommodate more housing. And the idea is that if we encourage more housing, that they would be more affordable for our residents. So a series of bills were passed and adopted, and again, the goal of the bill is to address the housing crisis in what they believe is a cost-effective manner in the sense that you're not consuming additional land or necessarily putting in new infrastructure. Some key features of the state bill, there's a maximum square footage for ADUs, it's 1,200 square feet, or 50 percent of the square footage of the primary house. So if you have a house that is 1,500 square feet on your property, the maximum size of your ADU would be 750 square feet. And there were additional state statutes that made it easier for cities to implement this, such as not requiring additional parking. The draft ordinance requires one parking space for the ADU, and we, so I'll get into a little bit more details later on. In regard to setbacks, the typical development standards still apply for ADUs. However, if there is a detached garage and it's located in a corner of the property where there's zero setback, the state requires the cities allow the conversion of those garages and not necessarily have to meet the typical setbacks. As far as fees are concerned, metering is required to be optional, so we cannot require new meters for the ADU. new meters for the ADU. We can apply growth mitigation fees, but in proportion to the impact of the ADU. And we do that now because it's based on a square footage calculation. As we were discussing this with our stakeholders and with the commission and among staff, we had concerns about the state statute, and these were our reactions. Essentially, properties in R1 single-family districts would take on an R2 characteristic because you would be adding an additional dwelling unit. We anticipated that some of our neighborhoods that are already impacted by cars on the street would be further impacted by having additional units in our neighborhood. And likewise, there would be associated impact on infrastructure, sewer, water, and traffic. So there are some options for a local ordinance. A lot of, a lot of it is required, but there are just a few areas where a city can tailor the ordinance a little bit. So in our local ordinance, we prohibit junior ADUs. Junior ADUs is an even smaller version of an ADU, and we felt that it wouldn't be appropriate because we may find households in potentially substandard living conditions, given the size of a junior ADU. The state statute makes it optional to have one or more ADU on a single-family lot, but we, you know, are limiting it to just one ADU per lot, and this is still consistent with state statute. We require replacement parking for garage conversions, and garage conversions, they are one form of an ADU, and we would require that those parking spaces be replaced. Now granted, those spaces can be replaced by driveway parking or another paved surface in a setback. The state gives the option of requiring that to be covered or uncovered, and staff has recommended that they don't necessarily have to be covered. And this is in response to sometimes the, what some property owners may propose is a carport structure that is not always necessarily attractive at the front of the property. And in staff's original recommendation, we included an owner occupancy requirement. This is an option that cities can choose, and the requirement would require that the property owner live on site, on the property, as opposed to the ability to rent both of the units out. So I'm going to talk about this owner occupancy recommendation a little bit more because that was the key issue that was discussed at the planning commission meeting. The planning commission voted 3-2 to remove that staff recommendation of owner occupancy. And so here are the kind of pros and cons that were discussed at the commission meeting. Specifically, Chair Dickerson and Commissioner White O'Neill were in favor of having the property owner live on the property because they believed that that would ensure proper maintenance of the property, and that having the property owner on site would give them the ability to address tenant issues more quickly because the owner would act as a responsible property managers. The other perspective was that the owner occupancy requirement would be a constraint to the production of affordable housing. There was also some concerns that requiring the property owner to be on the property isn't really enforceable and infringes on property rights. So there are some competing or conflicting objectives here. The council has, in the staff report, I forwarded the planning commission's recommendation. However, I also included some alternatives. The council could accept the planning commission's recommendation with the removal of the owner occupancy requirement, or take the following alternatives. You could theoretically take no action and allow the provisions of state law to apply. You could also reject the planning commission recommendation and include the owner occupancy requirement. Or you can direct staff to get into the details and revise what it means to have the owner be on site. In some cities, owner occupancy meant that the property owner was on the property 180 days out of the year, or that owner occupancy could mean a family member or extended family member. So you could direct staff to kind of get into the details a little bit more, to clarify what it means to be owner occupied. So this is staff's recommendation. I'm available for any questions. I also have Ryan Hostetter here, our planning division manager, and she's also very familiar with this effort, and we're available for any questions you may have.
Any questions, Mr. Ring? Oh, Dr. Moats?
It says in the pink sheets that ADUs are designed for one or more persons. How many more persons than one can live in an ADU?
That's typically regulated by building code, and so there's a number of, a minimum number of square footage that would be considered a habitable space. I don't know that number off the top of my head, but you can theoretically have a lot of people within a dwelling unit, no different than a primary unit where a family of six could be in a two-bedroom house.
I want to talk about garage conversions for a second. It says here that for a garage conversion to be an ADU, it should have a second kitchen installed, and/or it has to have a sanitation facility. What constitutes a sanitation facility?
Toilet and shower.
Could I bring in a porta potty and put it in there, and does that constitute a toilet?
It should meet building code for what constitute a permanent dwelling unit, and so when this, when plans go through, you know, go before our plan reviewers, we would look for permanent facilities.
So then, if you were going to convert your garage into an ADU, you'd have to jackhammer up the concrete and put in a sewage pipe that would connect to the sewer in your house with the flush, and have a private bathroom with a shower?
Right.
Okay. What constitutes a kitchen?
Typically, cooking facilities, and so that could be a stove with gas line. And there is a definition for a kitchen, but primarily space that would accommodate for the preparation of meals.
I'd like to pose a scenario, maybe it's extreme, but I live in a nice R1 street, same as Mr. Boyson. We like our low density, which is why we selected to move there. I have a 500-square-foot, three-car garage, which has access to an exterior door. I also have a son-in-law, who's a farm labor contractor working with H2A. In my 500-foot garage, could I make three 100-square-foot bedrooms, each bedroom containing four bunks, and then multiplying four times three, have 12 persons living in my garage?
Well, this could get away from the ADU, because this is, with an ADU, it's defined as a separate dwelling with, usually with defining characteristics such as another kitchen and another bathroom. What you're describing could happen today without an ADU ordinance because you're just adding more bedrooms. And yes, that conversion is possible now, if you provide, if you meet building code in terms of providing adequate access, hallway access, windows, lighting, that is a possibility.
Is there a minimum lot size for an ADU?
It applies to all single-family residential zones, actually, all residential zones with an existing single-family house.
Thank you.
Did Mr. Cordero repeat? Did you have a question?
No, not right now.
Okay. Would you like to?
Yes. You were talking about the impacts on neighborhoods with parking and sewer. What about trash receptacles? Do they have to get additional trash receptacles for ADUs?
The state doesn't include specific language on trash receptacles, but if I were to kind of gauge, given that the state doesn't require new meters, I would think that the state wouldn't necessarily require additional receptacles, and that it could be an optional feature.
What about this law? Does it supersede all the HOAs and CCRs that are in place?
That's a good question. I may not have a really good response for that. This state statute, you know, it pertains to land use and requires a local jurisdiction to have land use regulations that accommodate for ADUs. My best assumption is that this would preempt what local HOAs would have the ability to do.
And so, such with animals as well. We probably don't know that. If you rent to someone who has three dogs and two cats, are there going to be any amount of animals per residential area on each property?
The local zoning ordinances for animal regulation should still be able to apply. I don't think cities would be required to further accommodate the keeping of animals just for ADUs.
But we don't know that. They're, I mean, they're pushing us over the brink in the residential 1 and residential 2 properties. I mean, I would think that everything would be a love infest with everyone.
This is certainly a state statute that has direct impacts to our local communities.
And I've gotten some concerns because a lot of these, a lot of homes are constituents' biggest investment in their life, and they move to certain areas all across the City of Santa Maria with the intention of, they choose to be in an area they are, whether it's big, small, or whatever. We have gone, as a planning commissioner, we have fought when we had new residential areas coming in close to other residential areas because everything is so tight-knit. And this is, we're just forcing the issue on property owners, and their quality of life may go downhill if their neighbors decide to build a unit and convert their garage. So can they do both?
So our draft ordinance only allows for one ADU, and so, but to get to your concern, staff initially recommended that the property owner live on site. We felt that that was a good way to try to minimize some of the impacts because the property owner would be able to provide oversight and supervision. Another possibility that wasn't included in the draft, we talked about garage conversions. We could have a recommendation in which covered parking is required. Right now, the draft allows parking to be uncovered. If we require parking, replacement parking to be covered, it would be a difficult standard to meet because if you convert your garage, you would essentially have to build another covered parking space in the form of either a separate garage or another carport, and you would simply need the space for it. And usually, the first 20 feet of your driveway would not count, would not be able to count as an area in which you could put up that carport because it would be within the front yard setback. What I'm getting at is that that would be a disincentive for somebody to convert their garage, and that they would leave their garage in place because that's the required parking that is required.
Don't you think that's a good thing?
I have another question. What about the five, okay, we talk about, you're talking about the prohibiting the JADUs of 500 square feet. So if you have a garage that's 500 square feet or less, they could not convert that. Is that correct?
It depends on what's on the property. So, you know, if there's still an ability to provide covered parking somewhere on the property, then they could still convert their garage if they can find another area on the property to provide the covered parking. But most R1 single-family tract homes doesn't usually provide that ability because you have limited access in your side yards. So you either have to park in your driveway, but if you don't have the ability to put a carport in your driveway, then you're constrained.
Well, I think what the situation is here in the City of Santa Maria, and you see it all across town right now, are single-family homes that have multiple families and multiple cars. And it's, you know, it causes havoc for a lot of people that don't appreciate that, and then we're just going to increase the impact by allowing these units to go in. And I know it's not, you know, something that any of us have control over. It's our state legislatures that mostly do not come up with brilliant ideas to help California function. And I really believe this is one of the poorest ideas they've ever had because of their inability to create affordable housing. And so we, that live among the people, are the lowest on the totem pole to get voted in, but we're the ones that are not attacked the most, but are the ones that, you know, our constituents complain to us the most about what's going on, and we have no control over it. So I'm just, you know, if we can come up with something that could help the homeowners, you know, not have to go through something like this, and if they do, having the homeowner live in their home would probably, from what I've heard, is probably one of the best things that we can do to protect the City of Santa Maria. Are you finished, Ms. Boyson? I am. Okay. Mr. Boyson?
So first of all, Ms. Ring, this is a state mandated requirement. We don't have a choice. This is not, we're not up for debate on whether or not we're going to allow ADUs. ADUs are going to be allowed in one form or another. All that we simply are doing are trying to analyze the areas that we can place certain restrictions to mean, to improve the integrity or to maintain the integrity of our neighborhoods.
Right, that's all we're doing.
And to get to Dr. Moats' scenario of farmworker housing in a garage, this could happen in primary residence right now. And as one of our famous landlords here in town seems to be doing on a regular basis in certain houses. So, I mean, that can happen in your house right now. If you'd like to have Steve, you know, expand his business.
We should do something to correct that, too, I think.
Well, and I would certainly agree with that, but I think that's a separate issue. So a couple of things. On the junior ADUs, the junior ADUs are defined as being less than 500 square feet. Is that correct?
The junior, they're a very unique form of ADUs, and in fact, it seems a little bit backwards because the JADUs, they have their own kitchen, but they can share a bathroom with a primary unit.
Oh, got it. But is there, so I just want to make sure, if I have a 1,000-square-foot house on a lot, or a 900-square-foot house on a lot, and I'm restricted to a maximum of 50% of the square footage in the ADU, I could still put a 450-square-foot ADU as long as I meet the kitchen and bathroom requirement?
Yes.
Is that right? Okay.
Yes.
I, I mean, you want, anyways, we're probably not in debate yet. So one of the things that you and I talked about yesterday was that, what the experience of some of the cities and counties that have implemented these ADUs, residential second units, I know... units. I know when I was on the Planning Commission for the county back in, you know, 2005, we addressed this issue of allowing what we called residential second unit, granny units, whatever. And I'm just, did you have any chance to see whether there's been some experiences as to how big this impact is going to be? I quite honestly, my own personal feeling is that most of our lots in the city of Santa Maria are fairly confined as it is. And I would think that we're probably not going to see just this huge flood of permit applications, but...
I'm going to let actually Ryan Hostetter go to the podium and provide some insight. She had some conversations with some nearby jurisdictions.
Oh, great.
And also from her own background, working in her jurisdiction.
Sure. Good evening, Ryan Hostetter, your planning manager. My experience with San Luis Obispo County was mostly with what they call secondary dwelling units, and they were very common. And they had that requirement, they've always had that requirement. It is unique, however, because typically in the county, most of the properties are quite large. And so, you know, you would have a multi-acre, 5, 10, 20-acre piece of property where you're allowing a second unit on it. That's generally, we would see it's family planning where, you know, their parents would come and live on a farm with them and a second house on the property. So that's typically what we saw in the county. And we did not allow them on small properties, but that's all changing in San Luis County now because of the state law. And I also had a conversation with planners in the city of San Luis Obispo, and they're grappling with this as we speak as well. And they, their council did require the owner occupancy to deal with the neighborhood issues in their jurisdiction to allow that oversight. And one of the main issues they were dealing with, however, was the vacation rental issue. And so they put a provision, they don't allow vacation rentals. So that was something they were particularly concerned about. So those were the major points from San Luis Obispo.
And we don't have any recommendations within this proposed regulations as far as temporary rentals, Airbnb and this sort of thing. Is that, is that going, are we looking at that? Are we analyzing that? Do we know what the impact of that is?
I think it's so new, and it really depends on the volume of vacation rentals that we will be seeing here in the city. And it's not quite at the same level as the coastal communities like Cambria or Cayucos where a large percentage of all of the homes in those communities are vacation rentals. So it's at a little different level. I think it's yet to be seen, because it's so new, as to whether or not there really will be a push for that from the market.
Okay. And my last point that I just wanted to make, I know that we had, the staff report incorporated that this should apply to R1, R2, and R3 lots. I think as far as the home ownership or the ownership occupancy requirement, we should, if we are going to go down that path, we should only do it for R1 lots. Because in R2 and R3 lots now, you don't have the owner occupancy requirement. And those lots are generally made for larger or have more accommodations for second units. So that's all I got.
Ms. Waterfield?
Don't go away. I do have a question. Councilman Boyson brings up a good question about vacation, or you did, but I'm looking at the requirements here. So you could call vacation rental a short-term rental because that's what they have written in here, and it's right, it's right there. So that could easily happen because it's written in the law, the state law. Also, I understand there's 75 permits already waiting to be approved. Is that correct?
There's currently 14. So we checked our database today. There are 14 in the queue. In regards to the short-term rentals, I think we can take direction from council. If you feel this is an issue that you would like staff to begin to start working on in terms of drafting ordinance to allow them or not allow them, or however, we'll take direction. And something else to consider is if they are permitted, the ability to collect TOT for the short-term rentals. But staff, we will look for council's direction.
Any, oh wait, are you finished?
I just, no, I had one more.
Okay, one more.
I had one more, and I'm going back to the JADUs because I want to completely understand this. It is written here that JADU units are less than 500 square feet, are located entirely within the existing single-family residence, can share a bathroom, but must have its own cooking facility. So that could be a garage. Correct?
I do believe that it's from existing habitable space. For example, the conversion of a master bedroom and creating a door leading to the outside, although a master would have a bathroom. So a room that doesn't have a bathroom, but you add a kitchen facility with its own entrance.
Well, then that needs to be cleaned up. The wording in there needs to be cleaned up because it gives you the impression that it fits right in.
Well, and staff's recommendation is that we do not allow JADUs. So...
Okay. Dr. Moat's?
Just one question. Of the 14 applications we've received so far for ADU, how many are for garage conversions and how many are for construction of a separate dwelling? And how many are for additions to pre-existing attached homes?
I'm trying to remember. We had this question at the Planning Commission. There were a couple that were garage conversions, and it was a mix, a mixture.
Mr. Cordiero?
What kind of problems, if you know of any, did they have with the enforcement of the owner occupied being required to live on the premises? It would seem to me that that would be difficult to enforce, and it would probably be something that would be taken on by the city attorney's office. But what, if any, problems are they having?
Yes, you're absolutely correct. It is a difficult item to enforce, and one of the tools or mechanisms in place is essentially a deed restriction, ensuring that the property, if a transfer of the property were to occur, then, you know, the ADU runs with the land, and a future owner would be noticed on title that they would have to live there if they were to have the ADU occupied. And really, it would be on a code enforcement or a complaint basis when notified by the residents that there's an issue on that property, we'd have to follow up. But that is really the tool that we have.
Okay. Some additional comments, Mayor, please. I think that Ms. Waterfield brings up the idea that the state is forcing us to do something in our community that doesn't fit us as well as it may fit some others. While I commend our governor and his intimate wisdom of trying to provide more affordable housing, it doesn't apply to us the same way. And when you take our community and compare it to the community of Cambria or even San Luis Obispo, I think we have a different demographic. And the people that are living in Cambria are going to be renting in space for a week or two, maybe a month, and then they're going to go home. I think that the people in this community that would be moving into some of these homes would be more permanent residents. And I don't know why this came up for me this morning, but I was on my way to do some business, and there's a house in my neighborhood that has, and everybody's mentioning this, has eight cars associated with this house. And I don't know if it's still the case, but when I was on the police department, one of our highest level of complaints was parking issues. And it just seems to me that if something is wrong, that there's some kind of a way to fix it. I don't know that you can legislate your way out of a problem like these ADUs once they're in. I see that as a huge problem that we will have to endure for as long as ADUs exist in the community. Because the moment we open this up and people find out that they can apply for this ADU, and now all of a sudden start making money on what is now their lawn, I kind of disagree with Mr. Boyson a little bit. I think we're going to have a lot of these homes, these places that are going to be trying to fit in, well, we'll cut it down a little bit, or we'll change it, we'll make it more crooked on the property so that it will fit, and the structure will be accommodated to the design of the property so that I can start making my money as a landlord. So I kind of see it as a problem. I know that there are some people in the community that are trying to do something with something called tiny homes, and they're trying to sell that project as a matter of putting some of our veterans in there. And I think that's great to have that as a possibility, but I think that these structures would get swallowed up by people that are going to be doing other things in the city that are going to make them permanent residents to the community of Santa Maria and not just temporary, short-time residents. And the idea that she, Ms. Waterfield's bringing up with, and Dr. Moat's, that all of a sudden he can have 12 more people living in his home. And 12 more people, I'm pretty sure there's only the two of them living there now on a regular basis. And all of a sudden, he has 12 more that are consuming the resources that it takes to accommodate a property owner. The trash has been mentioned, the water's been mentioned, the sewer should be mentioned. All of those things are going to create additional issues for the resources that we have. And maintaining those resources at that level is going to create negative returns for us in our community, or in any community, actually. So I would be in favor of discussing the restrictions that can be brought upon these people to minimize their ability to just build out their property with impunity, to give me a couple of these ADUs, or let me convert my garage and then I'll apply for an ADU, or something. I just think it's going to be a nightmare. And that isn't your fault or the city attorney's fault, that's the state's fault.
Madam Mayor, can I ask one more question?
Sure. Go ahead, Mr. Boyson.
Could, as far as the short-term rental solution, could we simply put in our own regulations that units must be rented out for a minimum of 30 days? I mean, is that allowed by state legislation? I mean, that would take care of this short-term rentals.
We can do that. The state's statutes, they intend for these to be rented out for residents. I don't think they had, I don't think the state had short-term rentals in mind, per se. One more thing to kind of bring up, the state statute allows local jurisdictions to have a few options. However, whatever the local jurisdiction chooses to do cannot burden the ability to build ADUs, meaning we start to live up to the intent of the state's objectives.
I mean, a lot of these arguments should have been done at the state level back a year ago, but that's gone.
And keep in mind, this is only one of a whole slew of legislation. There's this housing package that's been discussed at Sacramento. And, you know, when we talk about, I think you may have, if you're familiar with the city's housing element, that there's all sorts of rules to document how much land we have or to project future inventory at certain affordability levels. This is one tool that the city, that the state has imposed, local jurisdictions, amongst a number of different other housing legislation.
And with that, I think it is our responsibility as city council to protect the integrity of the city of Santa Maria because it's not being protected at the state level. It's going to, it's going to make everything look like a bar scene from Star Wars, and that's exactly what we're trying to avoid.
Okay. Are there any further questions?
Well, the comment I do, because you mentioned a passing comment earlier that the short-term, there would be some payment possibly into the TOT. Well, if you extend that to the 30 days, I believe there's a 30-day thing there where if you're staying longer than 30 days, then the TOT might be out. You're now a resident there, and there's no TOT collectible. Is that correct? I think we've had that happen in some of the local motels.
Yeah.
As members of the council, you've touched on a number of tangential topics, farmworker housing, short-term rentals. Each of those topics could warrant its own ordinance. So you can, we take direction from council.
Okay. Madam Clerk, do we have any written correspondence?
We have no written communications.
Okay. I received one, so I just want to read it. Mayor Patino, I write and express my concerns about the proposed ADU ordinance that is currently proposed. As you're probably aware, our community has a significant problem with multiple families living in residential occupancies and the inherent parking issues that accompany that problem. I know of many homes that have had several generations of family members living in them, and it seems like everyone there has a car. I have personally seen homes and apartments in which 10, 15, even 20 people are crammed into them. This ultra-high density is very detrimental to the quality of life in Santa Maria. While I understand the state of California has in essence forced the city into permitting these ADUs with little or no restrictions, I am firmly convinced that the Planning Commission Chairman Dickerson and Commissioner White O'Neil were 100% correct in their assertion that one of the dwellings must be owner-occupied. This requirement would enable the city, code enforcement, and police to ensure that parking and other municipal code violations would be addressed much sooner than if the owner is either at another address or locally, as in the case in many of our rental properties and an out-of-town landlord. In closing, I thank you and the council for their service in our community and urge you to include the owner-occupied requirement as supported by the Planning Commission Chairman Dickerson and Commissioner O'Neil. So...
Who wrote it?
Jack Owen Jr.
Smart guy.
I'd like to, he was on the, he was on the code compliance board and was also a firefighter. I'd like to open up public hearing at this point. Madam Clerk, do you have any requests to speak in favor or in opposition to the item?
Madam Mayor, we have three requests to speak.
Gary Crabtree, followed by Ernest Armenta, followed by Ken Huff.
Well, my name is Gary Crabtree. I'm a real estate broker and developer here in the area. And I just wanted to touch on a few places and some of the concerns I'm hearing up here that I believe that the staff has already addressed about the fact that you can't have anything that would be less than 30 days, and you have the right to state that so that you do away with the short-term rental factor that you're concerned with. And also, an unincorporated area of Santa Maria, the, this ADU, granny flat, cottages, in-law units, has been on the books for many, many years. So this is not some new concept that the state of California is forcing down our throats. All they're really doing is implementing it and saying it will be across the board, and they're trying to implement rules that will effectively be in accordance with all incorporated and non-incorporated cities throughout California. Now, you can argue all day long whether it's a good thing or a bad thing, but it will add additional housing. And we are short hundreds of thousands of homes throughout California. And part of the aspect of what you're talking about regarding having multiple cars or multiple people living in homes, we already have that in the city of Santa Maria because there's not enough houses for those people to live in their own individual structures. So provide them with more structures, and you won't have to have three and four families living in one single-family home. Parking, always going to be an issue. State has tried to deal with it the best that they could, and the local staff is going to have to make the final calls on tandem parking or covered parking. It will be up to them to make those decisions. But from the standpoint of voting for this, I'm completely in favor of the texted amendment C2017-004, as the Planning Commission voted on it. And I think that in anything that you do, there's going to be negatives along with positives. And the issue right now is, as a developer, it already costs... And the issue right now is, as a developer, it already costs over $50,000 before you can break ground to build a single-family home today. So it doesn't cost anywhere near that amount to add an additional home to an existing single-family lot. So I think that that needs to be kept in. And up there, I can tell that most people just don't want it. Unfortunately, it's here, so now we have to determine how we're going to deal with it, and in what format is it going to be the best for the community. And so I would say that, at this stage, there is so many uncertainties. But out here in the county, it's been on the books for years for R1 zoning lots to have these secondary units. Very few of them were ever built, and that's because they've been too cost-prohibitive. They had too many restrictions on them. And so if you're in one hand in favor of more housing, then don't restrict them. If you're against more housing, then restrict the hell out of them. Thank you.
Mr. Armenta, followed by Mr. Huff.
I'm listening to you folks speak, and I don't know why I'm getting this feeling that you guys are, not you guys, but that we're talking about certain parts of the city. That's just a feeling I get. I don't think that people are putting additional homes where Mr. Boyson lives and Mr. Dr. Moats live. I think you're talking about the other side of town, where mothers and fathers have relatives or are homeless. And say, hey, we're open the door, we're not cold, you know, wet. Come to our house, you can stay here with us, instead of staying in the street. We have homeowners, do you guys, there's nothing wrong with being, having an income and owning your own home, but there's many people who are struggling out there to keep their home. Struggling, working hard every day, and just doing anything they can legally to keep their home. And if that means they're going to convert their garage and add, and have some people rent the garage, hey, more power to them property rights. I think I want, I think the first question is for Mr. Treheal. Any actions or any decisions this council make, can a new council change those or dissolve those actions or decisions? Meaning, we set these rules, Mr. Treheal, can a new council next year come in and dissolve and remove all these restrictions that I think this council's going to impose? Well, I'm asking Mr. Treheal, the legal counsel cabinet.
Mr. Treheal, would you like to respond to that?
Unless he don't mind, or he don't have to, I can't force him.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The answer is yes. A future council can change the municipal code at any time.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, I think Mr. Cudero made this comment, restrictions on these people, on those people. I mean, who is he referring to? I think property rights is what I'm talking about. I think the last folks that I want making decisions, what I build on my property, who I bring into my property, is Mrs. Waterfield and Mr. Boyson and Mr. Cudero and Dr. Moats. Absolutely, 100%. I hope there's a lot of people listening at home, so when we come for elections, we can decide whether we want you, Mr. Boyson, or you, Mrs. Waterfield, telling me what I can do on my property. But I'll end on this, Mrs. Patino. All for those 14 applications that are pending, I would request that all 14, that both impact fees apply to any ADU, additional dwelling unit, that they pay impact fees. Second, that each ADU have its own water meter. That's another customer and another ratepayer for us. And that, I think you brought it, Mrs. Waterfield, that any ADU have been assigned as a trash recept, what do you call it?
Trash receptacle.
Trash can, right? That's what it means?
Thank you, Mr. Armenta.
So, Mr. Patino, why, you mean that's it?
Yeah, it went off.
No.
Thank you. Mr. Huff?
Thank you, Mayor Patino, council members. I'm Ken Huff, representing the Santa Barbara County Action Network. For 16 years, we've been advocating for strategies to promote affordable housing. I agree wholeheartedly with everything Mr. Crabtree said. My board met last week and talked about this, and they had a really healthy discussion on the issue, including the slumlord aspect of it, and many aspects of it. They talked for 20 or 30 minutes on it. And finally, the board unanimously supported a motion to support ADU development and oppose regulations aimed at putting barriers to fulfilling the intent of the state law. They went a little further to say they support ADU pilot programs that incentivize housing for the homeless. So my board urges your council to approve the recommendations of the planning commission. They might go further. We didn't talk about the junior units, but I think, given the nature of their motion, they wouldn't want to see that restricted either. On a personal note, I and my wife own a house in Santa Maria, and we're going to rent out the main house shortly. There's a lot of room in the backyard, there's a two-car garage, big driveway, plenty of room for three, even four off-street parking places. And I don't have plans to do this, but I'd sure like to have the ability to build something of 500 or 1,000 feet in the backyard and provide more housing for people that's somewhat affordable. We need it in this community and throughout the county. So I urge you to support your recommendation of your planning committee. Thank you.
Thank you. So I'd like to close the public hearing and bring this item back to the council for discussion or a motion. Any further discussion? If there's no further discussion.
Well, no, I would like, I still have some comments.
Okay. Go ahead. Dr. Moats?
I think this is a horrible law. I think this is the Garage Conversion Act of 2016.
17.
No, it was actually.
Oh, okay. You're right.
I think this is going to mess up R1 zoning. There are people that want to live on R1 areas, don't want to have people taking the house next door and increasing the density. So I think that we should, if possible, delay this as long as possible, and I think that's one of our options. I think we should obstruct it as much as we can. And I think we should make the most onerous restrictions on it, so as to discourage people from doing it. And that's my thought on this.
Mr. Cudero.
Yes, there's something to be said by what Mr. Armenta said. I don't know that, maybe I said this inappropriately or it was misconstrued, but I agree that we should all have the right to have anybody do our home that we want to. The issues that I'm talking about are things that take place beyond building the home, the things that take place that come with it. Like I mentioned, you offered that mitigation, mitigating the trash problem, about each one has its own trash receptacle and a different water meter and such. So those, my issues are with after that it takes place. How do you deal with a system that is designed by councils of the old to have X number of people in an area, and now, all of a sudden, you're going to take that same area and you're going to add another 25 or 40% of the people? And so those are the kind of things that some problems are made out of. That doesn't, that's not rocket science. I mean, you've got a stadium that handles 30,000 people, and when you put 50,000 people in it, there's a problem. And it's going to create problems that we, governments, the police, the officers that have code enforcement, they're the ones going to be called on. That small handful of people is going to be called and say, well, why don't you do something? And I think the comments that are made up here are, what can we do now, before it takes place, to minimize that negative impact on our community? It's not a matter of trying to restrict what they do for the sake of being non-responsive. It's a matter of how to systematically build the system in a manner that will allow for that growth without, or with as minimal negative impact as possible. That's what I have to say, Mayor.
Any other comments, please? Mr. Boyson?
First of all, we already have plenty of illegal conversions throughout the city. And for us to just bury our head in the sand and decide that we're not going to pass anything and we're going to delay this as much as possible and obstruct it, is just going to create more illegal conversions. I personally see the impact of the lack of housing in the city on a daily basis. I mean, at Good Samaritan, we currently have 50 families right now that are ready for housing, but there is not any housing available. It's just not, unless they can afford to pay $1,700 or $1,800 a month. This is one tool in the toolbox for us. I, you know, I would acquiesce and agree that on R1 lots, one of the units needs to be owner-occupied. I think that that is a good suggestion, and I think that that is a way that we can help to monitor this, because remember, code enforcement isn't going to monitor all of our neighborhoods. The neighborhood is going to monitor the neighborhoods. And if the main house is owner-occupied, as Dr. Moats knows, if somebody goes sideways in one of their houses, one of the neighbors is going to let them know. And, you know, that's the way of neighborhood that they've always been. I, as far as the separate water meter, I apologize, Mr. Armenta, but that's not possible. We cannot require a separate water meter based on the, on state legislation. But I think that that would have been a good idea, but it can be allowed. I mean, they can put a separate water meter on there if they like. So, I mean, I'm in favor of the ordinance as it stands with the one caveat that the R1 lots be owner-occupied. I think that we should probably review this, maybe set it up for review in two years, the owner-occupied requirement, just to see if that is something that's just an unenforceable requirement, or if it puts such a burden on code compliance that, you know, we may want to rethink it. And maybe review all of the restrictions that we place on this in two years, just to see where we're at. So I'm in favor of the ordinance as it stands with the idea that it, R1 lots be owner-occupied. I would not like to see the owner occupancy requirement on R2 and R3 lots.
Ms. Waterfield?
Yes. I am not in favor of what the planning commission has passed, for the simple reasons that have already been indicated by Councilmember Moats and Councilmember Cudero. This, you know, this is one of the biggest investments a person makes in their lifetime, and they choose to live wherever they want to live. And to be able to mandate from a state that anybody can go in and put in a 1,200-square-foot or less rental, or convert their garages, I just, I just don't believe that we're doing justice to the residents of the city of Santa Maria. The quality of life issues are going to be a problem. I have lived next to people that have rented next door. It has been havoc. And I just, I just wouldn't do that to somebody. The owner occupancy needs, that person needs to live there 12 months out of the year. They need, they need to live there consistently, because they are the ones that are going to have to take care of the issues. It shouldn't be left to code compliance, it shouldn't be left to policing, it shouldn't be left to the mayor or the city manager taking these phone calls. If someone is going to take responsibility and do something as opposed to putting in a dwelling unit, then by gosh, they need to take the responsibility of taking care of the issues that happen on their property. So I am, I am in favor of not supporting what the planning commissioners have supported, and that we put restrictions on this to the best of our ability, because there are so many unintended consequences out there that we haven't even heard of. Half of the things I asked Mr. Chen, and no, you know, nothing bad to him, but he didn't know, because the state just seemed to have blanketed this across California, and there are so many unanswered questions. So that's mine.
You know, I'm going to make my comments now. We have the, we've had the housing element that tells us exactly what we're supposed to do, and we're supposed to set so many houses aside for the different levels of income. And I guess it really bothers me, because I certainly believe in the private property rights. And I only see your own property, if you own your home, I see that going down in value. I live in a neighborhood where there are apartments and, that are not well-maintained. I live in an area where I've seen people that rent out houses that, where there are more than one family, I don't know how many, in this house. And it is not maintained, and it looks blighted. And I see us as continuing to go down the road where we have more slumlords. We have slumlords that are, live out of the area, but we have some that are locals, that are slumlords. And we're not even dealing with that. I see Sacramento reaching out and telling us how our neighborhoods should look. They reach out, if you take the gas tax, you take this, you take, probably once or twice a year, we have them reaching out to the communities more and more, telling us how we should live. And some of those people in Sacramento don't live like that. They have no idea. And we keep voting these same people back in. I think it's, you know, I just don't see it fitting our community. I would agree, we have to do it. You know, it's just so many laws come down to us, and we have to approve them. And I think that's just ridiculous. They give us all these regulations. There's no place affordable on the coast, and you cannot guarantee me that these houses are going to be affordable for people. It's a way of selling it. And I don't believe anything that comes out of Sacramento. But now they want to rush this thing through, they've seen it coming for years, just like they've seen the pensions coming for years. And here we are, we're the ones that have to take it. And if the only thing we hear, the complaint's on too many people living in houses, and they can't afford, and I understand they can't afford to live anyplace, but we, sitting at this dais, are not the ones that made the homes in California unaffordable. It's those guys up in Sacramento. And we hear about parking on the streets, and we get that complaint all the time. And those are things that we did, we did not create here. I mean, that's created someplace else. So now they're trying to ram this down us really, really quick, let's get this done fast, and forget about some of the regulations. But we have it, and we have to deal with it. And I agree that, let's put the restrictions on it. I think the covered parking needs to be there, the owner-occupied needs to be there. People are not assuming and accepting the responsibilities of property they own as it is right now. And we have all kinds of people that aren't doing, you know, aren't applying the codes or living up to the codes that are in our community, and we know that. And we need, maybe we need to be more aggressive in that. And if they aren't living in there, I think they need to be, I think there needs to be heavy penalties if it's not owner-occupied, so that we don't encourage them to rent it out. But I don't know that with R2 and R3, you know, that's already there, so I don't have a problem with that. But certainly, the R1s, I would want owner-occupied and covered parking. I don't know what other restrictions we have that we can do. I definitely don't want the junior ADUs.
Madam Mayor, I do.
Dr. Moats?
I also agree with the covered parking for garage conversions. I think we have to have that. I don't see that as one of our alternatives that we're going to vote on. Can we add that?
That is a restriction. We can add that as a restriction.
I think we should have that.
If it, only if it's a garage conversion.
For garage conversion.
If they're putting a separate unit or an attached unit onto the house.
Right.
That they would, as long as the garage is still functional, they would not need covered parking.
And I do not agree with what the planning commission did, but then my planning commissioner, I'm voting the same way my planning commissioner voted. Mr. Cudero.
As am I, as am I.
Mayor, I'd like to comment on your comments, and just to ask you a couple of questions. What you said with regard to the covered parking, the owner-occupied, I think the word used is the restrictions. I want to, I want to accept your comments as a concern for maintaining a level of beautification in the community and a level of living conditions, as opposed to what they could be construed by some other people, saying you're just restricting them because of these reasons. I accept them, that you're interested in maintaining a level that many of us have come, and many people have come to expect. people have come to expect in our living conditions.
And you choose to live in certain neighborhoods because of that. You have made that choice and for the state to come in and say, I'm sorry, but, you know, forget about your choice, we're going to, we're going to change this is wrong. It's absolutely wrong.
Okay. If I could just make one more comment about the covered parking. I mean, I, I think we're going down a slippery slope with covered parking because all of a sudden we're going to have carports inside yards that may, I mean, may truly destroy the integrity of those neighborhoods that we're trying to protect. So.
Yeah.
With garage conversions, I understand.
You know what, Mr. Boyson? I think right now I would like to make the scope as narrow as possible because we can always come back and revisit this.
Okay.
So.
With that, I will agree to that, Madam Mayor.
Madam Mayor, excuse me.
Yes, Mr. Trujillo.
Thank you. The covered parking aspect will present some potential legal problems with the statute. If you're going to request that covered parking be mandated tonight, I'd request a continuance and allow my staff the opportunity to research and provide an opinion. As an alternative, I think that what I'm hearing from the council is alternative bullet point number two, which is to reject the Planning Commission's recommendation and include the owner occupancy requirement in the R1 zone only. In that, we are prepared to entertain a motion for tonight. If not, another alternative is we can report back on amending the ordinance to include covered parking.
Okay.
Or we can report back in six months or a year, see how the program's working and see if covered parking is a recommendation of staff.
But can we, we can add covered parking later though, can we?
This ordinance can be modified to add a later.
Oh, okay.
Direction.
But the problem is if we have applicants right now, this will come into effect, what in thirty days?
Thirty days after the second reading.
After the second reading. So we have to have that parking, the covered parking area by when? Before the second reading?
Well, I think what Mr. Trujillo is stating is that they will have some time to explore.
We'll continue it.
Okay.
But I do have a request too because someone, someone asked the question, how many people can live in a household of twelve hundred square feet or nine hundred square feet? Or what is that legal amount? And I would like to find out what that is as well to restrict. We can't do that. You're shaking your head.
What if I have six kids? I mean, in a thousand square foot house.
I'll address the overcrowding issue.
Yeah.
In this case, this situation's been going on for years and in the early nineteen nineties, maybe in the eighties, the case was decided in the city of Santa Barbara. Where they tried to regulate non-related individuals from living together, no specific address, for example, college students overcrowding in single-family residence. That was struck down by the courts. It's been the law for thirty years now that you can't regulate, you can't require individuals to be all related. So one of the issues that we address in code enforcement with overcrowding is that if you have a family and they're all related and two parents and five children and they're in a one-bedroom, small house, there's not a court that's ever going to evict them and throw them out because of overcrowding. So, there are building code requirements and limits on the amount of people you can have in one room. That is quite high actually when you actually do the calculation. You can actually fit quite a few people legally in one room. So that is not really something that we can address tonight. If you were to introduce the motion tonight as proposed, that would give my staff the opportunity to research and determine whether or not we could impose a requirement for covered parking. You do not have to adopt the ordinance on second reading. You can, we can report back and you can direct staff to revise the ordinance if it's possible and we would be noted for introduction if that's legally feasible.
Okay. So, okay, what do you want to do?
With that, Madam Mayor?
Yes.
I would make that motion to take item or bullet point number two and reject the Planning Commission's recommendation and include the owner occupancy requirement on our one lot.
And the covered, and to.
No, no covered parking. We're going to, he's going to come back with us.
You're going to research the covered parking.
And we can continue the second reading if we need to.
I'll second that.
Okay. It's been moved in second to reject the Planning Commission's recommendation and include the owner occupancy requirement. Any further discussion?
Do we need to put a time limit on the owner occupancy requirement? Because some jurisdictions.
Mr. Trujillo?
Yes, I was going to address that as further direction because I did hear quite some discussion on short-term rentals.
Okay.
That is not been agendized for tonight. That should be a subject of an entirely different notice meeting. And if you'd like, you can direct staff to look into the short-term rental issue and come back with recommendations.
But as far as the owner occupancy, we would want them living there twelve months out of the year. I mean, they live there. They, they're not there for a hundred and eighty days or things like that.
People take vacations and things like that.
Well, yeah, but come on. That's their, that's their main home.
But I would think that if it's required that it be their primary residence is evidence by, that's the address on their driver's license and that sort of thing, that, that has to be sufficient. Otherwise, there's no way we can enforce.
Enforcement will be difficult, but it's not impossible with staff time. You can look at request documentation from the owners. Where do their trash bills go? Where do their water bills go? Do they have a homestead with the county for that property or are they claiming a homestead exemption for another property? So all those are ways that we could document and prove if the property's owner occupied or not. It's not easy, but it is possible.
It's possible. Great.
Okay. So do we need to include that? The owner occupancy requirement of twelve months? Do we need to include that?
If you include it as suggested, it's permanent.
Yeah, permanent. Absolutely.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
Is there a permanent resident?
Yes.
The owner occupancy is a permanent resident.
And we did that a second?
Yes. Mike had the second.
Okay, Mike had the second. Okay, so moved in second. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oh, I'm sorry. Madam Clerk?
Councilmember Boyson.
Aye.
Councilmember Moats.
Aye.
Councilmember Cordero.
Aye.
Councilmember Waterfield.
Aye.
Madam Mayor, Patino. Aye. Okay.
It's a lot of talk if everybody just agreed.
Okay. The next item is a regular business item. Madam Clerk, could you please read the title?
The City Council will consider approving the 2017 Growth Mitigation Fee Program.
Okay. The staff report is to be made by Director of Public Works, Mr. Khan.
Thank you very much. I'm Madam Mayor. Councilmembers, I'm pleased to bring before you another update on 2017 Growth Mitigation Program. Just as background to make sure we're all on the same page. The growth mitigation allows for local government agencies to charge an impact fee on new development to fund the construction of capital facilities that will serve that new development. This provides for a mechanism that all development contribute to mitigation of the impact caused by growth. The city has had its growth mitigation fee program in place since 1993. And this is a list of the nine components of our program that have been in place since ninety-three. Corp. Yard, City Hall, Recreation Parks, Police, Fire, Library, Traffic, Water, and Wastewater. As part of this program, development does not pay for all the capital project. They only pay for their prorata share. The other portion has to come from other funding sources. Listed is a partial list of the funding sources we use to fund the entire capital project and fill in the part that is made by the existing citizens in the community. So on October seventeenth, the City Council had a meeting to discuss this item. At the meeting, we presented background information on the fee calculations in comparison to other fees. You also approved the updated capital improvement plan. And staff presented a proposal of the reduction in the growth mitigation fee in the downtown specific plan. I'm going to give a little background right now on the downtown specific plan in general and on the proposal. So, the downtown specific plan establishes a vision of regulation and guidance to revitalize, beautify, redevelopment, and redevelop the downtown core of the city. The plan creates a roadmap to focus the city efforts, attract investments, and be a catalyst for improvements. The vision and goals of the downtown specific plan are applied by an implementation plan that details specific programs, projects, and action needed to make them a reality. One of the implementation items is study additional development incentives and options such as impact fee reductions. So in doing that, staff considered this and staff heard from the City Council, community, and leaders about the need for restaurants and wineries in downtown Santa Maria. At the last meeting, we proposed a fifty percent reduction in traffic impact fees for restaurants, including wineries and microbreweries in the downtown specific plan to encourage development. I'd like to point out that we did not have the other fees included in that, which would be police, fire, recreation, and parks, and the other components. All we had was a reduction in the traffic fees at the last proposal. So after considerable public comment and council discussion, the City Council asked staff to bring back an analysis of the fiscal impacts on growth mitigation program of a fifty percent reduction of all growth mitigation fees that are on all non-residential developments used in the downtown specific plan. So I'd now like to present the analysis that we've done since the meeting of October seventeenth. So the criteria we used on the analysis, first of all, as part of the analysis, we separated, we have two categories. We have the traffic fees only and the other part, we have the other fees. And the other fees include corp. yard, city hall, recreation parks, police, fire, and library. In the analysis, we excluded water and wastewater fees. That is because they are enterprise funds and as such, the fees cannot, must be used to pay for that service. We'd like to point out that we still apply to fee credit for existing or previous used sites. Much of the downtown is already built on or is building on in the future. Per the municipal code, fifty years before 1993, if any structure or use was legally on place on that lot, we will give you credit for that use. So you get credit for your traffic, you get credit for police, you get credit for all fees for the existing use on your lot. We used a two-year study period to study the impact of these fees. Residential uses per your direction were not included in the study. So what I did is I took a couple scenarios and put projects on the lot calculating fees for the existing project that we're, we're creating and also for different scenarios for that project so we can identify what are the impact of the growth mitigation fees. First parcel we selected was an existing parcel on 510 South Broadway. The existing structure is a 5,050-square-foot restaurant. That's an approximate size. And on it, I put a 8,000-square-foot three-story building. It has restaurant and commercial split on the ground floor, an office on the second floor, and a restaurant, excuse me, residential on the third floor. This is a classic mixed-use setup. So on the chart before you, we have the fees calculated for that. So I'll go over it very slowly here because it could be a little confusing. So on this line here, these are the different type of uses. So with no fifty percent reduction, the total fees of that project that I just showed you would be $208,000. That's for all fees for restaurant and commercial on the bottom floor, offices on the second floor, and residential on the third floor. If you had a reduction for just the restaurant, like I had proposed at the October seventeenth meeting, and you only had a reduction for traffic fees, your fees would be $167,000 approximately. If we reduced all fees, including traffic, it would be $162,000 approximately. Moving forward, if we have a fifty percent reduction for restaurant fees and offices, then your traffic fees only reduction, if you only reduce your traffic fees, the total fees would be approximately $127,000. Accordingly, your traffic fee and other fees would be $121,000. And finally, if you reduced all the uses except for residential fees, your traffic fee, your traffic, and you reduced traffic fees only by fifty percent, then your fee would be $109,000 approximately. And if you reduced traffic fees and other fees, your fees would be $103,000. So in summary, your total fees with no reduction would be approximately $208,000. And if you reduced just traffic fees for all uses except residential, you'd go down to $109,000. There would be about a $100,000 reduction in the fees of the project. And if you reduced it for traffic and all other fees, it would be $103,000. The next scenario I'd like to present is the gateway mixed-use project with the existing project you have already seen. I calculated the same type of fee reductions for the exact project that was submitted by the applicant in the past. The existing structure is a 2,400-square-foot gas station, which is a fairly high-volume type of use because we have the gas pumps and we have the gas station in it. Commercial's on the ground floor with the parking, as you know, and residential's on the top three floors. Here are the calculated fees for that particular project. No reduction at all. The approximate fees are $218,000. With the reduction in the commercial, which is the only use, my scenarios are analyzing the reduction because we're not looking at residential, the fees would be $187,000. And if we had all fees, traffic and other fees, the fees would be $185,000. I'd like to stress and point out at this time that on the two scenarios, the reduction for the gas station is a total of $136,000. So as you can see, an existing use really reduces the fees. And on the other project, the scenario at 510 South Broadway, the reduction for the existing restaurant would have been $85,000. I took that $85,000 and the $136,000 into account in all these scenarios. So I'd just like to point out, there's already an existing program that greatly reduces fees when there's an existing use on the property. So analyzing the data, if I assumed there'd be four mixed-use projects built in the downtown specific plan over the next two years, which is a fairly aggressive assumption, and each site had an existing use on it, and we reduce fifty percent of traffic fee only reduction, I would estimate that we'd have less than $400,000 on the traffic impact fees. That is something that I could support. We can make it up with other funds from existing sources. We would not be able to increase fees in any other category in any other portion of the city. Those fees would stay exactly the same. We can't use other fees to mitigate reductions in fees. We can, you could go with many scenarios that you wanted to on this. You could say fifty percent reduction in all fees, including traffic, and not including water and sewer. It's really up to you. I'm just presenting an analysis of the impact, the financial impact on this, these two scenarios and my assumptions in this analysis. So I would like to make a recommendation that for projects in the downtown specific plan, we have a fifty percent reduction in traffic impact fees only. All you, all land use categories excluding residential. This recommendation here is larger than the last recommendation I made because I've included all other uses. Because of the public testimony and the council's comments, they thought that the offices and the commercial uses included in the reduction could help spur the downtown more. I should note that the project must adhere to the findings, visions, design guidelines, and standards of the downtown specific plan. We want projects that meet the guidelines of the specific plan. It's well thought out and I think the projects are deemed appropriate. Mr. Chen and myself would make the determination if they met those guidelines. And we would have the reductions expire on December 31st, 2019. It says on the screen seventeen, but that's 2019, so approximately a two-year period. We plan to bring our update in two years back. We plan to bring our update in two years back to you, approximately of May of 2019. So that would give you time to consider how it was working, and if you wanted to continue it, or if you wanted to change it, or if you wanted to expand it. I would really like to read a note into the record that I was receiving from Mr. Glennmore before he left. He had to go to his daughter's choir concert, but he would like to say he is fully in support of the city's recommendation on this, and he appreciates the work we've done with them. So Chamber of Commerce supports the recommendation. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions or comments you have on this.
Are there any questions of Mr. Khan?
I do.
Mr. Boyson?
Mr. Khan, you mentioned that the recommendation is 50% traffic only, but it looked like from your analysis that the other fees are very minimal compared to traffic. I mean, it would only increase that 400,000, less than 400,000, by a few thousand dollars, it looks like.
That's correct. The other fees, if you exclude residential, because residential is a large component of recreation and parks, but if you exclude residential, the largest fee by far is your traffic fee.
Yeah.
And the other ones are not as large as the traffic fee. I do agree with that.
It would seem to me that it would just make it much more straightforward if we said that everyone that wanted to do a commercial use in downtown, that you get a 50% reduction in your mitigation fees. I just, I mean, it goes back to the selling the sizzle, not the steak, you know? I mean, it's, we're trying to encourage development in the downtown area.
And I agree with that. As Public Works Director, I'm in charge of building capital projects for the city, and I like to guarantee, you know, protect my funding sources, so I'm a protector of them.
Mr. Hayden has taught you well, but--
Any other questions of Mr. Khan?
I don't have, I don't have any questions, but just a comment. And I would agree with Councilmember Boyson in his 50% across the board. It would make it easier, and it's only for two years, so this is something that we can definitely go back and revisit to see if it's working, and something that's never been tried. And if it's an incentive, then let's see what we can do.
I think it would be, again, a luxurious problem if we do have--
Oh, my gosh, absolutely. Mr. Cordero?
Yes, Mr. Khan, that was an impressive presentation. That must have taken quite a bit of work and a lot of time on your cellphone computer, getting those things done. I appreciate the work you did.
Thank you very much.
I like the idea of the two-year, rereading it again. And I kind of want to agree with Mr. Khan, but I could, what's that word you used? Equies? I could acquiesce and go back with you guys. But I think that, you know, if we can still get a little bit of our mitigation fees, and I'd kind of like to try to hold on to that, too. But I could go either way.
Okay. Any other questions? Madam Clerk, do you have any written correspondence?
We have no written correspondence.
A request to speak?
We have one.
Mr. Armenta.
Ernest Steven Armenta. Mr. Khan, I understood. We seem to be coming, maybe we come from the same planet. I understood this one. I'm surprised with myself that I understood with this. But absolutely, of course, but you know, I'm opposed to any 50% reduction to any downtown specific plan development. I see that if it's just traffic, I understand that. For a two-year period, it sounds good, but that, traffic's important to us. All funding, especially now, is important. But reducing the traffic and all other fees, if I got this right, Mr. Boyson, would you were recommending across the board, and Mr. Cordero, that that would be all nine components? Corporate yards, city hall, police, fire, library, water, well, water's excluded, and parks and recreations, right? Across the board, is that what you were? So I'd like to hear from Mr. Hanson and representing the fire department, and Mr. Pesada. I would like to hear from them. I think us the public, we'd like to hear from them if they're in favor of losing funds like that, vital bricks and mortar funding. I think, I think that they should come up and speak, not as police officer, not as a firefighter, as an administrator, and as a manager, a professional running his department. I think it's important if Mr. Pesada comes up and he says it, as a manager, comes and says, if he's in favor of this. That's all. I think, I think the representative from the fire department should come up and speak on this matter. Two-year period, it sounds good, but absolutely not. Because I know when, who's gonna make up those other fees? When you reduce it, who, how are we supposed to make up those other fees? Well, you know where it comes from. It ain't gonna come from payroll, it's coming from us, the rate payer. We cover it. We're the one that's gonna have to make up the cost of the difference. So again, Mrs. Patino, I'd like to know if I would invite Chief Hanson and the representative from the fire department and parks and recreations, if they're in favor with Mr. Boyson and Mr. Cordero. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Armenta. So I'll bring this back to the council for discussion and a motion.
Well, Madam Mayor, I would certainly, on a test basis, I'm sorry, Madam Mayor, I thought public comment is over.
Yes, I'm sorry, but public comment is over.
Yeah, well--
Thank you.
Are you gonna invite Mr. Hanson to go up and speak, or no? They're gonna remain silent?
Yeah, no, I am not.
Okay.
Thank you.
And if they remain silent, then I guess the party's over.
Mr. Boyson?
So, Madam Mayor, with that, if I would entertain, or like to entertain a motion that we introduce ordinance to be introduced, continued next meeting for the second reading and adoption, setting, no, we're not setting the rates, are we?
Revising.
Revising the 2017 growth mitigation fees with the exception that it include for the downtown specific plan, all 50% reduction in all fees for commercial, non-residential uses for a two-year period.
If I could just interject, that would exclude sewer and water.
Excluding sewer and water, yes.
It's been moved in second to introduce ordinance 2017 with growth mitigation fees. Any further discussion?
And with amending it to include--
With the many, okay.
--all required mitigation fees with the exception of sewer and water for all projects led--
Got it.
Yeah, excluding residential.
Any further discussion? Harry Nunn, Madam Clerk, could you please call the roll?
Councilmember Boyson.
Aye.
Councilmember Waterfield.
Aye.
Councilmember Moats.
Aye.
Councilmember Cordero.
Aye.
Madam Mayor, Patino.
Aye. Next item will be the report by our city manager, Mr. Stillwell.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. The next City Council meeting is on December 19th. We have two resolutions of retirement. We have a proposal to cancel the January 2nd City Council meeting. We have the growth mitigation annual compliance report, which goes back to what we heard from public comment earlier of asking where those, what the fees were collected and what they were used for. We'll report on that. There's a general plan amendment for 1111 West Cook Street, and reprogramming of the home funds, and then the appointment of Mayor Pro Tem. And then the January 2nd meeting proposed to be canceled, and the meeting after that would be January 16th. Includes my report.
Thank you. Okay, let's see, from the council, Mr. Boyson, we'll start with you.
I can start. Madam Mayor, I have no reportable items, but I would like to report that in partnership with the city, the Good Samaritan Shelter is 90% complete with our triplex at 607 West Cook, and we will be moving three families from our shelter into those homes before Christmas. And all of you will be receiving an invitation for a grand opening here in the next couple of weeks. So it's a very exciting time there.
Fantastic. That'll be a nice Christmas present for them.
Yeah, absolutely.
That's awesome. That's great.
Ms. Waterfield?
Yes, Madam Mayor, I attended the police department badge pinning on Monday, November the 27th, and we had a lot of fine individuals getting promoted. And Chief Hanson, thank you very much for your leadership in that area. On Saturday, December 2nd, I attended the tree lighting festivities and the Santa Maria Parade of Lights, which was fun. After that, we went to the Santa Maria High Football Game, which was exciting, and we got all hoarse, and it was great, but those young men really worked very hard to make that a reality, a CIF reality championship for them. And you know what? They can go back and do it next year because I think they're, they're just that great of a team. So congratulations to the Santa Maria Saints. And then saw everybody last night at Rick's retirement party, which was fantastic.
Thank you. Dr. Moats?
My only reportable event was the retirement dinner last night. I had a great time. Food was excellent.
Thank you. Mr. Cordero?
I also attended the badge pinning, and I, we had two sergeants promoted, one lieutenant, and one commander. I knew one of the sergeants, and I knew the commander and the lieutenant, and I certainly would applaud Chief Hanson on his promotions of those people, from what I remember of them. I also attended the tree lighting ceremony and the parade, and last night's party with Mr. Hayden. It was amazing to hear all the comments and speeches. He's got a beautiful family, and he's young enough to enjoy his retirement for many, many years. It's a lost yet again a time to look into fresh ways of doing things and see what direction our city's gonna go in next, but that's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you. December 2nd, I attended the tree lighting festivities and at city hall. Then we were shuttled up to the, to be in the parade, Parade of Lights 2017, and then went over to the Saints football game. On December 4th, I met with, had a briefing with our DC lobbyist, and then attended Rick's celebration of retirement last night, and did the Ben Hayes Show this morning. And I would like to remind people that on Thursday, this Thursday, at 10 o'clock in front of the Maldonado Center, will be the annual Freedom Monument Ceremony. And inside the Maldonado Center will be the display of men and women who have given their lives for our country, and it's really an exciting display that travels throughout California. So, and I think that's it. Any other comments?
Can we close this meeting in honor of John Gray?
Absolutely, Mr. Cordero. Go ahead.
Certainly, in honor of John Gray, I was privileged to attend her memorial that was held over at the Alps. It was the most people I had ever seen there at a memorial in my tenure as an ALF, and certainly my tenure as a secretary. So it was, it was very well done, and her family was very complimentary. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you. And ladies and gentlemen, that--
Madam Mayor?
Oh, yes.
Yes, we need to recess to a closed session to continue the 5:30 closed session.
Okay, that concludes tonight's council meeting, but we were going to adjourn into closed session. Yes, thank you.